Not this year, they haven't done.
Wait, which one? Oh, the local one, yeah.
Well, come on, this is the slowest four minutes I've had.
It's so much.
Enjoy the moment, and I get 6:30, I'm going.
Which is gonna be any second now.
Chomping at the bit.
Okay, here we go, we're gonna call them in to order. First item on the agenda is the roll call, please.
Schnelley?
Yes, here.
Mar?
Here.
Snissa?
Here.
Mols?
Here.
Bino?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
And Glish?
Glish?
Glish is here.
And your new alternate, Poga?
Yep, here.
Thank you, and we will welcome Mr. Poga here as our new alternate. So, welcome.
Yep, thank you.
A real exciting thing to come to, so. Okay, we're going, next item is approval of minutes of December 2nd, 2021, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Go ahead.
So moved, Bino.
Second rolls on.
We have a motion of a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Next item is community input. This is the beginning of the meeting, we have, in this part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the planning commission, including items both on and off the agenda. Is anybody here to adjust the committee, other than something that might be on the agenda they want to talk about later? They can talk about now if they want, but not later. Thank you, we'll move on. It's a public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation of village board of revised general development plan of GDP to allow planned development zoning at 201 and 251 Liberty Park Drive. Applicant is Oregon Parks LLC. At this time, we'll open the public hearing, and Elise, you're on, staff report.
All right, thanks, so, so it looks very familiar to you guys, we've been talking about these parcels for what feels like years, probably has been now, but we brought this forward last, last month with the change to remove the alley for these duplex lots that are just west of Liberty Park, just north of Omni there. Y'all were in support, we had a couple comments about the corner lots, I think it's four and nine that are up against Bergamot Boulevard, there was a request to have those driveways be split, so I have in the revised GDP language that there can be no more than one driveway facing Bergamot Boulevard if they choose to face both of them north or south, that's perfectly fine. We are also working to finalize in the right-of-way vacation document, which would be a separate process, it would go through the village board, but just losing a little bit of the on-street parking there, I think mostly on the north side of lots one and two over there, that won't really be used, and that'll be where those driveways come out for the duplexes likely over there. This updated language in the GDP mostly setback changes, and then removing some of the language that referred to the alley, so just that other document Jeff had up is just something I received from Kio the other day, so just wanted to make sure you guys had that latest layout, and he's here available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, and you do note that Elise's memo to us that she has a recommendation to us to approve it, the village board. Mr. Ladopoulos, you have any comments you want to make?
No, thanks for having me, the map that you, oh, sorry, Elise, do you mind?
People on the map again.
Or Jeff?
Yep.
Yeah, so, so the map that you're looking at now is just a supplemental one, it's not part of the GDP, but it was so that when we get to the plat and pre-plat, we're not surprised, I was a little confused by the fact that the pre-plat and plat maps show the old paving, so it's the new lots overlaid on the old paving, but as Elise said, you can see up north of lots one and two, that's where the bump out is being removed, so that was the only reason we kind of added that as an extra. But other than that, no, this just, this GDP just reflects the setback adjustments and so forth, like Elise said.
All right, thank you.
And then we'll plan on having both the preliminary and the final plat at the February Planning Commission meeting, we'll have the public hearing for that, too.
Fine, thank you, okay. Are there any public comments from anybody? Plan commission comments, anybody, any questions, comments? I'm assuming not, well, I'm assuming that nobody's commented because we've all seen this, we all understand exactly what's going on. Okay. Nothing else, we will close the public hearing, move on. Discussion, possible recommendation of village board approval of a revised GDP to allow planned development zoning at 201 and 251 Liberty Park Drive, applicant Oregon Parks LLC. Discussion.
I'll make the motion, Bino.
Motion, we have a motion, we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, this is recommended village board approval, thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome, you're very welcome.
See you next month.
Thank you.
Move on, public hearing to discuss and consider recommendation of village board of a GDP to allow planned development zoning 113-117 South Main, the applicant Years and Hours LLC, which is the ready set. Anybody here for that? We'll, okay, we'll get to you, we're open to public hearing at this time, Elise?
This was discussed last month at our joint meeting with HPC, this is the restaurant where Charlie's on Main formerly was, they're getting ready to open in the next few weeks here, the sign is one of the, the blade signs, and that is not allowed in the downtown district to have lighting, so we discussed this, looked at kind of the neighborhood there on that block, there's other lit signs there, and I think we all agree this is a very tastefully well-designed sign, so just moving this through with the language for kind of that mini GDP SIT, we did this on the Culver's sign the other month, so this is just allowing the, the lighting flexibility to allow standard lighting types of the blade sign, so standard includes ambient backlit, internal character cabinet lit, and gooseneck, so this would include the lighting styles that have been shown here, so, kind of just a formality, but GDP is just allowing that zoning flexibility, and then the SIT is just approving the specific sign, design here. This has not changed since the last time you saw it last month.
All right, thank you, thank you. The applicant, do you have any comments you would like to make to us, ma'am?
No, but happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Well, you better give us your name and all that good stuff so I can go on the record.
Yeah, Ally from Sign Art Studio.
Thank you, thank you. All right, is there any public comments? Anybody have any questions? Plan commission, we've all seen this. Wow, we're gonna close the public hearing, and move on to discussion. Okay, we'll discuss the possible recommendation of village board approval of the revised GDP to allow planned development zoning 113-117 South Main Street. Discussion, by anybody, again, realize that we have a memo from Elise that gives us the requirements, and her approval, or her suggestive approval, I should say.
Greg, I'm gonna move approval.
Okay. Mr. Bush?
Second.
We have a second. We have a motion of a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, I've been waiting for you to open up. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Move on to 4D Delta, review and possible recommendation of village board of an SIT for 113-117 South Main, Years and Hours, ready set. And that was also suggested as approval by Elise. Do we have a motion to have a recommendation village board approval of the SIT for 113-117 South Main Street?
Move, Bino.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Glish, second. We have a motion of a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Motion carries, thank you, guys. Item 4E, site view, site plan review and possible approval of the J.C. Park redevelopment project, applicant Village of Oregon. This is our opportunity, gentlemen, to, and, yes, gentlemen, to put them to the fire. Right, Jeffrey?
The what?
Now, it's a very nice plan, and Elise has reviewed it, and, does anybody have any questions about it, it looks pretty nice. It is in two phases?
Yes.
At this point, and the reason for that, I guess, is for funding and that type of thing.
Yes, so, just overall, looking at the site plan, meeting all of our zoning requirements in terms of landscaping, lighting, parking, above and beyond, and all those categories, the site plan should look at the whole park in its entirety, we're not sure exactly when we get the bids back, early, mid-February, where the prices will be, and what we'll be able to afford. We have a couple alternates listed, the playground area, and the baseball course, and I believe some different backstops for the baseball.
Correct.
Fields are gonna be listed as alternates, so depending on where the pricing comes back, that phasing line may shift a little bit, but the other thing to note is the concession stand is being designed, not by Rettler, the landscape architects for the park, but by Sketchworks Architecture, and we're getting pretty close on those plans, I think I just received an updated set today, so I'll bring that back for either conceptual or site plan review and approval, probably in February or March here, and then that construction will sort of tag behind the site work, but Jeff, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add, just in terms of constructability or...
Yeah, and obviously, we had to, you know, with, with prices the way they've been in almost all construction projects, that's why we had to go to a phasing plan, and we're really hoping for really good bids on this, but you just never know, and we want to be able to be able to bring a plan that we believe is buildable with the budget we have, and that's why we're at where we're at, with some alternates.
Okay.
This plan, as you know, I'm sure you've all probably seen this plan numerous times, this has been in the works for probably three to four years, Mike, I know Mike Grace used to joke around, we quit counting how many revisions of this there was, but it's been something that's been worked together with the ball clubs and the sports clubs in the village, I think it will be a great asset to our village and help round out that part of the village, but, yeah, hope you guys like it, there's, you know...
Where's the maintenance building?
Right where it says Phase One down there, that's not something that's ever been part of the project, although we are gonna need it, so...
Look, am I missing that?
Well, it's not in here, no.
Huge, I'm sorry.
Between, between Field Two and 14.
Yeah, reasons.
We reserved some space there for a future maintenance, equipment, ball field type stuff.
I just couldn't find it, that's why I was asking.
Nope, nope, it was...
But I guess when you say future, it means you can...
Exactly, it is part of the future, I would love to, but, you know, it's just at this time in the project, we're not in any position to be adding anything.
All right, thank you. Again, we have a recommendation from village staff for approval of the site plan, and there are two recommended conditions of approval, which are the zoning administrator approval of lighting plan, and any conditions recommended by the planning commission, which I don't know if we have anything to add, go ahead.
Having been, I was at those first meetings, it seems like years and years.
It was.
7:15 in the morning, we were down here with all the, all the sports teams, and so for me, it's, it's nice to see this finally getting moved through and getting done, it's been, it's been a long haul.
Yep.
Good questions, Jeff, I couldn't tell from the numbers on here, but it does appear there's a pretty good section of the southwest corner of this that's in the 100-year flood zone.
Just a, just into these ball fields a little bit.
I thought it looked like it even went up into where the concession stand was, so I wasn't sure, you know, what considerations were given to that, and, you know, the improvements that are going in, so they're flood-worthy.
Yeah, Rookert Millkey's been hired to handle all impacts for that, and so what I think will have to be typically in those situations, when you're, you're not in the floodway, you're in the flood plain, so I imagine it'll just have to be some additional grading that is removed in some of those outfields to help make up that storage capacity out there. That's typically how you do it on, when you're on those fringes like that.
Because they can't build up necessarily, can they, or...
Correct, well, you can't, you can't have an impact to the flood elevation, so what you end up doing is creating capacity where you're removing it, you remove it from one area and create it in another area.
Okay, so balance out the same square footage of area or whatnot?
Correct.
Say, I couldn't tell from the numbers, but it looked like it went way up in where the concession stand was, and I'd hate to see that flood.
It's a very shallow, it's a very, very shallow, tiny little finger that goes up there, yes.
But that'll be graded up and replaced elsewhere?
Correct, yeah, they'll mitigate that so that there's, there's not a negative impact in the...
Okay, it looks like they certainly knew that it was there, I just didn't see anything, how they were dealing with it.
Yep.
We got some pretty sizable bio swills, too, I think on both ends of the, or the south ends of the new parking lots off of Oak Street.
Yeah.
Elise, you had said that we are, we're good on the landscape, we're good on the parking, about, how do you factor, how do you figure the number of parking that you've got, I mean, we've got street parking on both sides as well, but...
Yeah.
No.
But you can't count those, obviously.
We are removing all parking, with, the part of this plan will be eventually, we're doing no parking zone on Oak Street.
Oh.
The whole, the whole reason we've added parking lots along Oak Street is the parking along Oak Street scares the crud out of me.
Yeah.
And I think it's just a matter of time until someone is hurt, or injured, or worse, and so our plan is to eventually, once these parking lots are complete, we will sign, we'll set, put through a resolution that will, or an ordinance that will change that to all no parking along there.
Both sides?
Both sides of Oak Street, yes.
Makes sense.
So is this parking intended to take care of the soccer fields on the west side of the road as well?
Yes, yep. We'll end up with more parking throughout, throughout that area, but, and I know that there's been a, there's been a push, I know, for some reduction in parking, and in certain areas, I completely, wholeheartedly support that, sports areas are ones that seem to use the parking when, especially, it's just tournaments.
Saturday mornings and tournaments.
Yeah, everyone showing up at the same time, we, you know, there's overlap, and
one team's still playing, the next team's arriving, they're warming up, I do have kind of the calculation of the parking in the memo, and the parking, also, Rettler's estimated between 500 and 1,000 patrons, again, depending on what all's going on and how seating is laid out, but that would be, you know, 125 to 200 parking spaces required, they're about 280, so definitely over, but, and you also have people that are coming from out of town, coming with a lot of equipment, and the ability to park nearby and have kids and wagons and coolers and all that, it'll just make the facility that much more safe and appealing for holding events there.
Tailgating.
Yeah.
Become a big thing in Oregon.
As I get further into the specifics, it's not part of the site plan per se, but having visited a lot of these the last couple of years for my grandkids' events, wayfinding, signage, you know, there's multiple fields, and you're carrying your cooler, your launcher, you know, where's Field Six, it's like, you're wandering around, and you parked, you know, how far away, and so helping people get to the right place would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that, there's not been a lot of discussion on that, but that's a very good point.
Okay. Anybody else, any other questions we have? So, it's, we, that is handled at this level, so we have a site approval contingent upon one item there with lighting, so do we have a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mols on?
Mols on, we have a second?
Second, Mar.
Second, Mr. Mar. We have a motion of a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you, thank you. Moving on, 4F, review and possible recommendation of village board of a certified survey map for the zero lot line duplex 630-632 South Main Street, applicant James Robert. This is something we normally do, not a big issue. Jeff, you don't see any problems, do you?
Oh, no.
Village planners, a recommendation, recommend approval. Anybody have any questions?
When they go to split one of these, is there any verification of the required firewalls and stuff that, that are required under the UDC code for a zero lot line, or...
That's the building code issue that...
Yeah.
Right, it wouldn't be, that's, that's not something we would take part in.
The only thing, just to know, this is, the only thing that's different here, if you see in the backyard, the line kind of jogs down to the south there, was, I was reviewing this, I realized that they did not meet on the Lot One there, the initial drawing of this had the lot size under 5,800 square feet, which is the minimum lot size in the few family zonings, so he said it actually made sense, they had the surveyor go back out there, and there's a meter box and some other things in the middle there, so they just jogged that to the south, but they're above now what the minimum lot size would be, and...
All right, thank you.
Okay, do we have a motion to review, to, to recommend village board approval of certified survey map for a zero lot line duplex 630-632 South Main Street?
So moved, Bino.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Schnelley, second. We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, thank you. Item 4G, review and possible recommendation of village board of extraterritorial certified survey map, 1252 US Highway 14, the Ziegler property, Town of Rutland.
So, this, this is just in the back of the cheese shop, off the old Highway 14, where it goes down to Tulane, so, kind of...
Behind the which shop, I'm sure, which?
The Wisconsin Best Cheese Store is that, just to the north of this parcel, so...
Sure.
Dealers are on the south side there, right where Highway 14 kind of comes down to Tulane again, so...
Yep, okay.
Just, they're redrawing the property lines here, so that the house and the shed are on the same parcel, and then there's another garage that'll remain on that lot, too, but I've gotten, Town of Rutland in Dane County has approved this so far, so they're just waiting for our review, and then we'll...
Historically, we don't take any position on extraterritorial jurisdiction regarding certified survey maps, as long as what they're doing does not necessarily interfere future...
Right, yeah, we take right-of-way, all of that.
It would be, yeah, it would be in accordance with, more or less, what our layout would be for the village, all right, so, we need a motion.
Do we not take a position, or do we just...
I think we all has in the past have always not taken a position.
Yeah.
So that's what we should do.
We've never done a motion.
Nope, we have a motion, recommend village board not to take a position.
No objection.
We gotta do something.
We do not object.
We do not object, yes, we do not object, I'm sorry, not take a position, we do not object, so, do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll move to not object.
I'll second John's non-objection.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any other public appearances? None, okay, communication miscellaneous, nothing, unfinished, nothing, new business, none, staff report. You gonna tell us anything, Jeff, or Elise, that you want to share with us?
Forgot to put this on the agenda, but the next meeting will be Thursday, February 3rd, we might have that as a joint meeting with the village board to focus on reviewing the affordable housing report, which will be up on the website by the end of this month, and then we also may have a presentation by Olivia Perry, who's the Dane County Affordable Housing Planner, there's a coalition forming with all the municipalities in Dane County to study housing needs, and so she'll kind of share some of what that, the intent of that group is, and then probably ask for some village involvement, but we may, we've had that request from the village board to kind of go through some of those suggestions in the affordable housing report, a little bit more depth, and so far, all the other agenda items for that meeting look pretty light, so I think that... a little bit more depth, and so far, all the other agenda items for that meeting look pretty light, so I think that might be a good meeting to kind of have more of a workshop, discussion, conversation, so we will let you know, but that's what we're trying to plan on right now, we'll check the village board.
You said February third, right?
Yes, that Thursday, first Thursday, per usual.
Okay.
And we are seeing a lot of activity continue, all the buildings continuing, but probably a lot of more phases of all these subdivisions coming in, and also quite a bit of interest and activity on up, up in our Mary Hill area.
Really?
That parcel, remember, where Mary Hill... Huh?
That we've seen twelve times?
Correct, but we, we reminded the current owner and any prospective future buyers that it has been deemed or decreed that that be formally platted.
But that more or less would be the area just south and a little bit east of the, of the cemetery?
Correct, correct, yeah, and we've...
Yeah, which makes sense, yeah.
We've been recommending a little higher density up in that area, actually quite a bit higher density in hopes of some affordability in homes and home sites. That's seemingly, I think, what our village is lacking right now.
Alright, thank you.
We also been getting lots of questions from neighbors in the Foxborough Golf Course neighborhood, I talked to several today for quite a while, so if you get any questions, you know, feel free to send them my way or Jeff's way, but that Glenn Hofer, who's doing Honor Ridge, he did purchase the golf course from Brook Schmidt in November, and the deal right now is that Brook Schmidt is managing the golf course, I guess, as he leased it back to him...
For three years.
Yeah, for three years, and then, you know, we'll see what comes of that, he hasn't submitted anything formally, we haven't met with him at a staff meeting yet to discuss anything, but we've just been answering questions about process and made sure it was clear that lots of neighborhood involvement, communication would, would happen, and there's three municipalities involved across the golf course, there's comp plan amendment, lots and lots of steps, so...
Annexations, carpse.
Reassure people that nothing will, nothing will get, you know, swept into the carpet.
Also realized, also realized there were agreements made thirty, thirty-some years ago.
Yeah, there are some pieces of the golf course in the village.
It was your first meeting, wasn't it?
It wasn't my first meeting, but I was on the village board and I did sign that.
It was ninety, ninety-four, some of those documents, but there's some elements of the village side of the golf course that are required to remain as green space, there's stormwater easement, so a lot of that land can never be touched, so...
That was the agreement with Mr. Peterson.
That's what's been keeping our phones ringing.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else for, for plan commission? Thank you, everybody, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you, everybody. I didn't want, Randy, I didn't want, I didn't want to shoot you, Bobo. No, no, they are not, this was, this was exceptional. No, he didn't, I want to give, did you get the... Well, here's, I'll tell you what, I'm gonna give you this to look at, if you want to. Otherwise, when I go from here, I go to the...
A little affected by...
Can you look at it so you don't need...